Good evening and welcome to the Bennington Select Board Meeting of September 27, 2021. We're in the lovely third floor multipurpose room of the Bennington Fire Facility. I'm Jeannie Jenkins, Chair of this Board, and I'd love for other Board members to introduce themselves.
Hello, everybody. This is Bruce Lee Clark. Welcome to the meeting.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Jim Terrance.
Hi, I'm Jean Connor.
Hi, Tom Haley.
I'm Gary Corrigan.
Thank you. And also with us tonight, we have Stu Perd, our Town Manager, and Nancy Lively, our wonderful Administrative Assistant Secretary No-Taker, and also Josh Boucher, who is staffing the CAP TV cameras. So first up, we all have our mics on. Jim and I will try and remember to turn ours back and forth. And let's see, let's start with the pledge of allegiance. Jim, would you lead us through the pledge?
My pledge of allegiance is that the wire of the United States of America to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jim. All right, and then the next couple of, would you share a vision statement, Jean?
Bennington is a welcoming, engaged, inclusive, resilient community where everyone, regardless of identity, shares in our mortality and benefits from an outstanding quality of life.
Thank you, Jean. Well, that reminds us always of why we're here and the purpose of what we're doing. So on to the consent agenda. For the purposes of discussion, do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda? I'm thinking we might want to split it out, the minutes of September 9th and the warrants.
Sure.
Do we want to do that first?
The minutes of the 9th and the warrants? Sure, I'll move that. They're adoption.
Sure.
Excellent. Any discussion on the warrants or the minutes that have already been cleared up with Stu?
Wait, which minutes are we going on?
Just the 9th.
Just the 9th.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's, it's not the 9th. It's not the 9th, is it? It's the 13th.
13th, okay, that's the one. And I'll amend my motion to say that. That's what I meant.
Okay, so the 13th, which are the last Select Board Meeting and the warrants. All right. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Please say no. Any abstentions? All right, and then on to the minutes of September 9th, 15th, and 16th. Do I have a motion to it?
I'll move it.
Great. Any discussion on those minutes? I'm thinking on the, on September 16th, we actually left executive session at 7:20 rather than 7:02, and then we made the motion for the slate and adjourned by 7:23. I can transpose numbers here. Any other comments on those? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Any abstentions? Tom. Yeah, okay. So Tom is in second. All right. Thank you very much. All right, so let's move on to public comment. It's like we have one individual here for open, for the open house, BBC, Sarah Kretsky. And Mike McDonough.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Mike McLeod. I'm the Interim Executive Director of the Bennington Corporation. And I'm accompanied this evening by Sarah Kretsky, who is a member of our Economic Fatality Committee and has been one of the key people putting together what we're presenting to the community this evening. I would note that our President Susan Placence is in a school board meeting, so she couldn't make it. And Eric Peterson, who has been the driving force behind this as our Chair of our Economic Fatality Committee, had a conference this evening. The Bennington Corporation has for some time been wanting to celebrate, is not the right word, but recognize the incredible efforts that our downtown businesses, both existing and new, have made to get themselves on our behalf through COVID. And we know that we're not where we hope we will be someday. But we have reopened, there is an incredibly new, incredibly new vitality made because of those existing and new businesses. We also wanted to celebrate those new businesses, which some of whom opened in the midst of COVID and some right on the heels of that lots of COVID that we had. But the timing is never seen prior. And so our Economic Fatality Committee, and again I mentioned Eric, decided that as the summer leaves us and the fall approaches, that we needed to make, do that recognition and allow our community to share it. And so we put forth the concept of having a Bennington, downtown Bennington open house. It will be a three-day event. I won't go into the details of that, Sarah, but it'll be a three-day event the weekend of Indigenous Columbus Day. And it will be comprised of Thursday evening, the 7th, Friday evening, the 8th, and Saturday evening, the 9th. Saturday all day on the night. And so I'm going to turn it over to Sarah and let her give you all what we think are great details.
Thank you, Michael. Good evening, everyone. So as Michael mentioned, this will be a three-day event. It's going to happen from October 7th through the 9th. It'll begin with a dine-out night on Thursday where we encourage the community to go to our participating restaurants on Friday evening. BBC presents a performance by Blue's Crossing that will take place in Merchant's Park from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. And then on Saturday, we invite all the community to come downtown from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. to shop, continue to dine downtown. And what we'll be putting together for all of the participating businesses are punch cards that will be available at each of the different businesses for locals and those that are visiting out of town to use and go to each of the different restaurants and shops and be eligible to receive a little punch. And then at the conclusion on Saturday, we'll have somebody on Main Street at the visitor center from the BBC to collect those punch cards and all the participants will be entered to win $100 downtown bucks. Thank you.
Yes, Sarah, so can I just ask, because Kayla is here.
Oh, yeah.
Are the, are the recreation facilities also going to have an open house from 10 to 12?
Yes, that'll take place on Friday for everyone to, it's Saturday, Saturday to, for all everyone in the community to go and visit the new facilities.
Thank you very much.
And I would just note, there will be further details published in the banner between now and the event, so keep an eye on those advertisements and listings. And we certainly hope that the community will join us in what we'd like to think will be an uplifting experience in our downtown. So thank you very much, everybody.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, so now I think we're ready for a YCA update. We have Caleb Recker. Shannon, you recorded this way. Your tab, okay, all right.
Thank you.
Welcome, Caleb.
Thank you, guys. All right, let's start with the first slide. Ready to go. Oh, this is just an intro slide. I think it's for the actual one. Yeah. So it was a very busy summer and when you, you know, walk into camp, it was one thing, and then when you look at the numbers, it really demonstrates how many youth were served. So the highlight is number down at the bottom there. We had 201 unduplicated youth in 855 instances. So total weeks being 855. We also had a few half-day. I just wanted to throw in there a good picture of ages. And then if you click the next era real quick. So because school let out so early, you know, a lot of families were kind of scrambling, not knowing what to do before traditional summer camp. And we were very lucky to have great staff who came together and we were able to do an early summer care. Not as robust, but we did serve 38 youth during those two weeks. School let out early. All right, a lot of words here, but I wanted to highlight that in addition, so on top of all of those kids, we also partnered with SBSU in their summer recovery. So this was a program for kids who were, you know, needing a little extra academic support and social, emotional time. So they went to the schools in the morning, they got on the bus, there was transportation up to our staff at Willow Park. We were able to be be directly through SBSU, so it was not a cost to the families at all. They just had to have fun, play outside. It was wonderful. I have a couple of highlights of summer enrichment, so it was more than just drop your kids off and pick them up at the end of the day. We had very thoughtful theme weeks and activities and field trips. It was a very full, busy, enriching summer. I was glad that my boys attended. Oh, and that photo is Katrina Hastings doing a storytelling workshop in the Great Room of the addition at the rec center. Okay. Had to say thank you to the many people who helped make it possible. So the first one is the Town of Bennington Buildings and Grounds Cruise. I mean, we went from COVID, you know, pretty quiet, to an explosion of people and kids and youth of the grounds. Made it amazing helping. We did receive the Summer Matters for All Grant through the state of Vermont, which of course helped with around $64,500. And then our counselors and leads. We, you know, it's hard staffing right now and it was amazing the staff that we had. 24 total staff and 17 of them were local high school students. And that was a big part of our summer program as well, is to, you know, help the teens, you know, with job skills and working with kids. So what we have going on right now, because we don't stop, fall outdoor soccer. So we are able to use the new fenced-in yard, you can see it in the back of that first picture on D H Street, to have our soccer program right on site. And this is adorable little three, four, five-year-olds kicking the ball around. There are 45 of them, filling the yard on Saturday mornings. Kids' Night Out is back, so we have the pool open and parents or caregivers who drop their youth off from 5:30 to 8:00, they get pizza, play outside, and swim for $3. And then swim lessons are extremely popular. I am very proud of the progress the swim lessons have shown and how highly in demand they are. Our current, you know, big growth is school age. So we were approached by the Village School of North Bennington before COVID happened about helping them with their after-school program. Why not bring in the Y who does after-school already and, but give some relief to their programs and staff? So, you know, we're finally ready to do it again. We got that off the ground. We're serving around 15 youth each day at the Village School, and that's right on site. SBSU was a little bit more complicated to figure out, you know, what school and where to start. So through getting space at the Bennington Sports Center, which is right downtown on School Street, the old Catamount School, we're able to serve, you know, multiple schools in Bennington, can bring kids and have an after-school program. I added the cost. It's $12 a day. You can pick the days, and we do offer financial aid. Okay, this one's a little bit complicated, so bear with me. We're going to head click and I'm going to show you the... Yeah, okay. I know you can't read that, but I just wanted to show you that we have a very full group fitness calendar. So if you hit twice more and go, yep, and one more. There we go. So I bucketed them by where they're happening. First, upper left there, it happens at Ben High. Upper right is in the pool, the Great Room. So we're bringing some classes to the rec center with yoga and virtual fitness, which I'll get to in a minute. And then, you know, outside while we can, we'll do as much as we can. It's very cool. I mean, in the last week, I feel like our group fitness offerings like tripled while Taylor was away on her honeymoon. I think she's going to be surprised when she comes back. All right, that's good for that. Oh, and that picture is just, I think I've shown it before. That's the group fitness room at Ben High. Do I see on the, yeah. Last slide is just the highlights of what's ahead. It really had me pictured, so I can tell you. Oh, that's okay. So the town, we just got done with our annual maintenance on the main level, the pool draining, cleaning. It was great to be a part of this year since we couldn't be last year. So now they're in the basement, kind of getting that ready to go again. We did use it for summer camp, but now they're really cleaning it out, repainting. Looking forward to doing more programs downstairs. Increasing our teen leaders club is a priority now that the teens are back in school and getting their schedules figured out. We had a great group of leaders in training during summer camp for those 13 to 15-year-olds that helped to reengage. Family yard game nights, now that that fence is in, we plan on having yard games. We already bought all of the games with a grant that we received with the intention of getting people to come to the rec center, not just for the pool or the fitness center, but because it's a great centrally located outdoor facility. We will put the games out. Families can come, play cornhole, play wash or toss, do all the fun and not have to worry about setup or cleanup, which sounds great to me. The pumpkin splash, which was a really popular, like throw pumpkins in the pool and kids swim and get them, like a pumpkin patch in the water. And that was, we were able to do that last year and will look forward to doing it again. And the turkey try, 5K try, will happen in November. And that is again, just what you would picture a turkey try. You run, swim, and bike, and then go enjoy Thanksgiving. And then, as Jeannie mentioned, we will have the three facilities that we're currently using open and staffed during the Bennington Open House on October 9th from 10 to 12. And I just got information today that that coincides nicely with the mural painting, which will be happening on the garage. It's already framed out and ready to go. It was a project with the Vista from the hospital. The new Vista's in. I met with him. The teens and youth are going to take part in painting the mural design onto the side of the building. And that will happen the same day from 10 to 3. And that's my quick recap of what is going on. I'm happy to answer questions.
Wow, thank you. That's wonderful. Questions for the board? Yeah, yeah. I have, I'm amazed, truly amazed. So first of all, just going through that short presentation that you just gave, that is a tremendous amount of coordinating, planning, logistics. Who, is that you? Are you and Taylor do that?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's all, that's what it is, right?
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to really...
Thank you.
Call out, like that's a tremendous amount of planning. Let's see. And I'm also, I think, accurate when I say the vast majority of what you just presented is new activities. There's maybe family, the family swim night or the pizza night.
Yeah, Kids' Night Out is, was from before. Yep, but, yeah, a lot of new.
Okay. The majority is new.
Right.
Okay. And then the other question I have is, are you finding that once people rediscover the Bennington Community Center, you sort of, you've got them and they come to multiple things? Or are there also lots of people that come to one thing or another? Like, I'm just curious about.
Yeah.
Is it the same people over and over again, or is it that, but then also?
Yeah, I mean, it's very interesting. A lot of the reason that we have new things is because somebody will come and be excited about it and have an idea for something else and say it to the right staff person who wants to take it on. And, yeah, that's, then they come back, of course, because they wanted it in the first place, so.
It's kind of a mixture.
Oh, definitely a mixture. It's been great. I mean, the Kids' Night Out is interesting. Last Friday was a half-day, so we had care for kids at the Bennington Sports Center from 11:30 to 5:00. And then, you know, they ran home real quick. Some of them didn't even go home and they came right to the pool and went swimming and it was great. It was, I mean, I hope they slept in with parents. If I didn't do my job, I'm sorry, but, yeah.
This is a tremendous, tremendous resource. Thank you. Other questions? Well, I have a question. I have a question about, so you have leaders. I don't know. I just wanted you to highlight the leaders in training because I was assuming that was your high school staff, but it's not. Your high school staff is different than your leaders in training.
Yep. So we had 15 leaders in training this year. And those are, we didn't fully develop the program. I'll be the first to admit that we had, you know, a lot going on. We didn't realize how huge camp was going to be. But what we did do was follow through on the, you know, you're not quite a staff, but you're more than a camper, and what does that mean? So, you know, they had responsibilities at camp and they took a lunch break and they wore their leaders in training shirt, they tracked their hours, that thank you swag at the end. We were able to provide, you know, little gift cards and stuff. And, you know, most of them want to come back and help on the future things. They see this as, you know, job training. One of our leaders in training from when we were just, the winter, she would come on Wednesdays when we did remote program. She aged up so that she could be hired and she was an amazing staff person. So it worked out great for both of us.
That's great. That's great. I love that you really are sort of realizing the idea of why would that all? So you're using a lot of facilities in very interesting and good ways, which makes us really happy. Are there things on the horizon that you see that you, you want community support or town support on that you want to highlight at this point?
I mean, the after-school program I see being huge, not just for school age, but also, you know, at the School Street location, at the Sports Center for teens, we have staff who can make it a safe space to come and hang out without it being very structured. And I do have meetings with a few community partners about what they already have going on for teens and seeing, you know, how that makes sense, big picture, in a couple of weeks. So more resources and more places to find what appeals to everyone. Stay tuned. That will be a couple weeks.
Any other questions? This was fantastic. Thank you so much. You are doing such great work.
Thank you.
What? You want a word? Oh, does anyone on the floor, anyone from the floor have questions? Okay.
Do you want to enter or do I have to? I have to.
Yeah, you do. Thank you. Yes, you do.
Hi, Nancy White Bennington. I have a question for the work that Taylor and Kayla are doing. My question is too much of these costs are falling onto the Bennington Recreation Budget. I don't think many people realize we're not just paying once a year for the Y. We pay twice. This year we're paying $220,000 for a contract. On top of that, the Y is allowed to keep the first $147,000 in sales at the rec center. Isn't that right, Stu?
Actually, they're allowed to keep all of the income that they receive. If they exceed a certain level, then that income is either returned to us or it's used as a credit towards for the future years.
Okay, then I would urge you at the next meeting to bring in the contract because the Y was explaining two years ago. Any money over $147,000 would come back to our town budget. Our recreation department was generating over $100,000 in sales before the Y came in. The pool is the big draw and the big money maker, and that money comes back to our budget to help us keep the costs affordable at the rec center. The other issue I have is Stu said the Y was going to collect the money and turn it over to the town office the same way that the recreation department did. But earlier this year, we found out that the Y is allowed to collect the money and put it in their own account. How can you ever verify how much money is going in? And I would say that regardless of who was collecting the money.
Well, we adjusted. Initially, we started out doing exactly that. And my finance folks came to me and said, "Look, it doesn't really make a lot of sense for them to bring the money to us, deposit it, and then turn it back to them." So we are working with them. We have no reason to believe that they would falsify the information that they're providing to us, and it certainly seems to be working well.
But Stu, you gave us the memo, a memo, and I should have brought it because some of the people here got the memo the same night. We didn't even know that was going to happen. We thought the people of Bennington would pay the Y. We would pay a contract fee. We didn't know they would be keeping that money. Again, the pool's the big draw and the big money maker. You told us, and I saved the memo, that they were going to give you the money. I mean, why would you open yourselves and the Y up to questions? And I know the cap was $147,000. Anything over that was supposed to come back to the town. And there's three or four of you sitting here who got the same information that we did. I don't think it's fair that two years into the contract, we're finding out that things were promised going to change.
Well, the, the, the way it happens has changed, yes. The way it's accounted for has changed. But the, the outcome is the same. The money, the money that they, if they earn more money than, than the contract provides for, that money is turned back to us. Or if we choose to do so, we credit it against a future year so that their future year will not cost as much. It really, it really, in that way, the taxpayers are actually benefiting. The better they do, the less it will cost us.
But the only taxpayers paying for the Y to be in Vermont are the Bennington taxpayers. The other towns aren't sharing any of the costs.
Well, they...
We're also, well, we're paying an extra $12,000 on top of the $220,000 contract to subsidize memberships. Are we subsidizing memberships for people who don't live in Bennington?
No, they, membership fees are paid to the Y. If you're a Bennington resident, you have a certain membership fee that is subsidized by the town. If you are a non-resident, a resident of Shaftesbury, Woodford, Arlington, Housen Falls, New York, you're paying a higher membership fee to, to use those facilities. And that way, they are in effect paying more than the resident of the town of Bennington does to use the facilities.
I realized that. Nancy, I do want to say, we actually, as a town, I reached out to every single community, including Housen Falls. So Bennington County, Housen Falls, and, and Berkshire County communities that had three or more individuals in that town that were rec center members to let them know that the structure of the rates had changed and that while the town of Bennington was subsidizing Bennington residents, old Bennington and North Bennington residents, those three, we were not subsidizing surrounding communities and that we would be happy to talk with them. If, if, you know, I wanted them to know that this change was happening and that we would be happy to talk to them. So it's, there is no confusion in the outline areas that if you're not a Bennington resident, you do pay more. that if you're not a Bennington resident, you do pay more. But I'm thinking, Stu, I think you just answered the same question a couple of times. Maybe, maybe this is a good point unless there's a different question you have. Maybe this is something that would be better for you to talk about.
Well, yeah. Your contracts, if the Y was supposed to get a pay increase until July, they were supposed to get $12,000 a month. Back in January, you started paying $17,000 a month. That broke the contract. How can you keep breaking the contract when you promised us how it was going to work for three years?
Is that confusion with you?
It has to do with the activities moving to Ben High and the additional staff that the Y had to bring in. This board approved that change and we have been meeting the obligation. It's a memorandum of understanding. It's subject to change, Nancy. Public bodies can do that. And, you know, we are following the letter of that agreement and, yes, it's the Y. It's a good relationship and it's working well.
And as you're seeing, there are incredible things happening there. And the number of adults and children served is incredible. The percent increase is just off the charts.
But I would say for 10 years, the select board never raised any of the prices at the rec center. That's why Tracy Knights and her staff never had more money for programming. And that's why the rec center caused us more as a town. But now you've raised those membership rates on non-residents quite a bit. And I wonder how many of those people will stop coming. I also think it's only a matter of time until we see those local membership rates go through the roof. And I don't know of any other town or city in the Bourgeshares that has this agreement with a taxpayer funded recreation budget or center. And I really think there's no reason we can't have a Y at the Ben High and have our own recreation center at the rec center because you've got to keep the public money separate from the private.
Yeah. So Nancy, thank you. But I mean, your personal, it's great to hear your personal opinion about this, but I think you've shared it now. So, you know, the agreement that we have with the Y, all of the discussions have been in public. There's been quite a bit of discussion. We're very, you know, we're very happy with what we're getting from the Y. And, you know, speculation on what may happen in the future is something we can all do, but it's, you know, it's just that it's speculation.
Well, you need to go back through the town reports because prior to last year, the sales at the rec center, the money should have come to the town budget. Two years ago, there wasn't any money reported in the town report. There was over $100,000 in sales that went missing.
And Nancy, we've had that conversation already. Stu apologized for not being in the annual report and that information has been forthcoming. So I, you know, I do think it, we've had these conversations. I do appreciate your concern and I appreciate you staying on topic with us. But I think once you get an answer, you know, you're getting the answer. It is whether you like the answer or not is a different problem.
Jeannie, the problem is this. I've tried to get answers for two and a half years. I've done what a citizen used to be able to do in Bennington. You either didn't give me answers or you gave me the runaround. Weren't you part of the group that brought the Y to Bennington originally?
I was, Nancy, I was. And I'm just going to say, at this point, you know, I appreciate your concern. You've asked your questions. They've been answered multiple times. They've been answered here, they've been answered on email, they've been answered in phone calls. It's really, you know, there is a difference between not getting an answer and not liking an answer.
Well, in parting, I'll remind you of this. For two years before you gave the Y the contract, the select board promised everybody you would approve the membership rates they needed to charge. Before you gave them the contract, when you released those membership rates, people were angry to see them. So what did you do? You left the rates the same as they'd been for 10 years and you gave the Y a three-year contract. I think it's a huge conflict of interest. You participated and voted on everything with the Y. But that's the difference with the select board today and the select board 10 years ago. No accountability to the citizens.
Thank you, Nancy. Any other public comment? Yes?
I just want to say one thing, but, you know, it gets lost in all this discussion. We pay less now for more services than we did in the past. That's a huge benefit for this community. And regardless of what Nancy's questions are, that's a lot of mine. And frankly, I'm proud to be a part of that effort and I'm glad the select board is continuing to support the Y in their efforts. So thank you to the Y.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan.
I wanted to make one comment too. And I think it's important for everyone to understand that in addition to the contract with the Y, that over, I'd say over $100,000 at least in grant funding between Kayla's efforts and my efforts have come to these programs to really add all this enrichment and activities and space, et cetera. So I think that's something to share.
Thank you, Shannon. Anyone else? All right, well, Kayla, we do appreciate your comments. We do appreciate what you're doing for us and, you know, thank you very, very much. All right, on to the next, senior center update. Is that you, Stu?
That is me.
Okay.
And this is really just to follow up on some of the discussions that have been held here about what is the town thinking about with regard to the senior citizen center? What are we thinking about with regard to the use of the Ben High space for senior programs? And so there's, I don't have any great slides and showtime for that kind of thing, but we had a tour of the Ben High facility. Several members of the staff and select board chair was there, as well as representatives of Meals on Wheels, the Council on Aging, and one other program, and I can't remember the name.
Are very sneaky.
Thank you very much. And we had a great tour. We took a look at the facility. It is in rough shape, there's no question about that. But it does, when you look at the space available, offers sufficient space to potentially house not only our senior programs in total with what we have now at the senior center itself. It also has an opportunity to probably triple the space that the Meals on Wheels program has, not only the kitchen, but the dining facilities. And it's still, on top of that, offers another 2,500 square feet of potential office space for other agencies who serve seniors and adults. And so it has potential. And that is really what we've done. We've simply toured the facility. We've taken a look at the floor plans. I've sent out a very rough draft to the various agencies that were with us that day to see whether or not they are serious about considering partnering with us in this facility. And we haven't even had negotiations with the owner, Chris Gilbert. We know that the Y was using a portion of that space, but we're looking at space that includes some 2,500 additional square feet. It offers a ton of opportunities for us. We don't yet know what the cost would be. The outfit would be the responsibility of the property owner, of his current arrangement with the Y and what he's been negotiating with the gymnasium, which is not even in the space that I'm talking about. And so we've got some work to do. I've got to know whether the agencies are with us. Does that will change? How much square feet we might need? I've got to know what timeframe the owner has as far as upfitting the building because it is a long way from being a great space. I congratulate Taylor for using the spaces that she had available to her and making the best of them. But they are not great spaces yet. There's a lot of potential though. And so we're in the very beginning here. We'll drive through my All About Town column or my report to the board to try to keep the community informed so that they know what we're thinking as we move down this track. But nothing's happening tomorrow. The senior center is not going to be abandoned. Meals on Wheels is not going to be thrown out of their current location. None of those decisions have been made. We have a lot of work to do. It's an opportunity. And that's the best that it is. It's an opportunity that gives us a chance to expand our programs, offer even more programs, and perhaps partner with some agencies to provide services to seniors that they now must go elsewhere to get. That's my take.
Great. All right, thank you. And again, the, yeah, I'll ask, there'll be tours. That would be one of the buildings that will be open on Indigenous Peoples' Day, Saturday, the night, from 10:00 to 12:00, if you want to walk through the parts of the building. Jeannie, you have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment. We talk about the interior space, you know, a lot, that there's a tremendous amount of it and there's possibilities. And every time I walk or drive by there, I also think about the parking situation is far better there than the current senior center. You know, you're basically on the street, which is going to be difficult. So anyway, I just wanted to point out that parking is a real plus also.
And actually, thank you for reminding me. There is, if you're familiar with the Ben High space, the entrance to the gymnasium is kind of tucked in between two wings of the building. That entire interior space is planned to be a courtyard that can be available for people who are renting the space, for outdoor activities, for simply sitting and enjoying the outdoors. And so that's something we don't now have at our current center. Can't really, there's no, for the great space to be outdoors. So it has that opportunity as well.
Questions from the board? Questions from the, you have a question? Go ahead.
Yes, Stu, you mentioned that you were talking with agencies and I appreciate that. Did you, in your communication with them, did you talk about a particular timeframe within which expressions of seriousness would be appreciated, basically? I mean, I'm trying to be as general as possible. Did you give them a timeframe?
No, I didn't.
Okay.
We, in our conversations in the building itself, there are, the agencies are all moving towards their current budget process for the coming year. They were going to be talking with their board. I don't know at all. Those are internal conversations among the agencies that have been held. So I'm hopeful that they can get back to me. I did indicate that we would like to have some expressions of interest, probably no later than November or middle of November because if we're going to be considering any kind of move that may impact our budget presentation that I provide to you in December, I would need to know that in that timeframe.
Thank you. Any questions? Oh, comments? Please. I have, I have. Yeah, so Rose, would you please come to the microphone? Thank you.
I'm Rose Shellford. I live in North Bennington. A while ago, I come and ask, what were they going to do with the senior center? Were they going to sell it or what? I was told, no, it wasn't mine. And now it's going to happen. Why do you want to move the senior center to somewhere else? We have a place now. It's been a while. I'll tell you, I've talked to a lot of people and they're not happy that you tried to go over there. And I don't think it's good to be in. I don't know. That was in rough shape. There's no way I'm going to be in there. There's no way. You just, and everything that goes on and on just never favored the seniors, that's for sure. So why do you want to sell the senior and run us over there? Over, around, a lot of people, kids, whatever, that are sick. The whole idea of the senior center is for people, seniors to be there. We like to do what we want to do. We don't, I don't think we should be mixed in with kids or anybody else. I mean, we work our ass off all our life. Don't we appreciate, shouldn't we get something that we can enjoy? You're not trying at all to do anything to the seniors. I've been trying to get into the rec center because I want to go after exercise class. It's like, it's always something different or whatever. They don't, I don't believe we have a senior class. What is it?
Well, the rec center, actually, most of the water classes are senior. They're just taking kids that come in and, you know.
I went to, it's nothing, it's not an exercise. If I wanted to be a baylorian, it would be great. I want to exercise all my life. And all of a sudden, it's changed. And a lot of seniors feel just like I do. They think they're being forced out. And I'm seriously telling you, I have a lot of people coming in and I feel the same way.
So Rose, I don't know if either Stu or also I don't carry a recreation since here, and I don't want to put you on the spot, Jerry, but if either one of you, I think, Stu, what you just presented was that we are definitely in the, this is an opportunity, let's sort of, let's explore it stage. There is no, there are no plans that you are bringing to us at this time. It is absolutely, we have a building that has space that would enhance opportunities for senior centers.
That really truly is the issue. Rose, we're not, we're not anywhere near making a decision about whether or not this is a good move or not because we don't have enough information. If in fact we move, then there's a decision that has to be made about what we do with the senior center space or the senior center building. If Meals on Wheels moves with us and enhances their programs, that presents one scenario for us. If Meals on Wheels stays where they are because they want to be there, that develops a whole different scenario. So none of those things have been cast in stone. Yes, is there a possibility?
Every time you ask a question, you're just out and out lying. And then all of a sudden, they said, they're not doing anything. We're just checking it. Now all of a sudden, they're doing it. That's down my line, my opinion.
Rose, you can call it what you will. All I'm doing is I'm telling you what the options are. And some of those options are speculative in nature. Some of those options are futuristic in nature. That's part of what planning is. That's part of what my responsibility is to this board and to the community when we're looking at options that are available to us. The fact that I can say that this might happen if this happens doesn't mean that anything is cast in stone. So I'm not lying and I resent the implication.
And I'm going to resent that.
I asked you and you told me not.
Rose, I'm going to remind you that you want to be civil.
I need to.
Absolutely. I personally, so please, at this point, thank you, unless you have a question, another question that is absolutely a question and not a statement.
All right, I have another question. What's the point of you wanting to sell the senior center?
So that is not a question on the table at this point. What we're doing is.
There is a question I want to know. Why do we never get a question?
Rose, here's the simple answer. Nobody's decided to sell the senior center. Nobody.
If they would be actually talk to us and have, maybe decent about it and tell us the truth, it would be way different.
I get it.
I mean, it's not me, I can talk to a lot of people and they're upset. Why would we want to go over there anyways when we already have a place to be? Doesn't make sense. You're spending more money than you don't need to.
Rose, thank you very much.
And Rose, I'll be joining you at the senior center for coffee on October 6th.
October 6th at 10:30.
So I'm Karen Barishis. I'm the program director at Bennington Senior Center. So October 6th at 10:30 a.m., we have coffee with the manager for an hour so people can get information from Stu instead of getting misinformation from other places because there has been a lot of misinformation spewed forth from various places. I had someone come into my office and she thought we were moving next week. And I was like, no, we've got a ways to go before we can even look at moving if that happens. The other thing is I've been speaking with Ashley Chawat at the hospital to set up a health lecture series in concert with the hospital. And so we've had our first one set on November 16th at 1:00 p.m. And so we've had our first one set on November sixteenth at one p.m., which, Paula Hapo will be coming over, she's a diabetes educator, um, and she'll be talking about what it is, how to prevent, how to work with it, what we have, and all that fun stuff. And Paula's awesome. So, those are my, my thoughts.
Thank you very much. All right. Yes, please.
I'm Debbie Matt in Edmonton. What time did you say the tour was, Saturday?
Ten to twelve.
Ten to twelve. And I was wondering what the cost of running the Senior Center building is a year?
Uh, currently, it's running, uh, on average, around forty to forty-five thousand dollars. This year was substantially higher because we had to replace the roof, which was a sixty-eight thousand dollar undertaking.
Now that includes staff?
No, no, that's just the cost to operate the building.
The building?
Yeah, the staff is, the staff and the programs are additional cost of, oh God, off the top of my head, it's going to be somewhere in the range of sixty to seventy thousand dollars.
Isn't it a total of around a hundred and fifty or a hundred and sixty?
The total combined, yes.
And that room, so how do you spend it? Is there much going on?
All right. Thanks, Debbie. Um, all right, any other questions? Kayla?
First, Rose, did you want a copy of the schedule? I happen to have much, but more than I have one. Do you want one? I want you to come in and join us.
I understand. So I wanted to, um, just touch on that, the water exercise classes, when I first began, right before COVID, were so popular, you know, over forty people in the pool. Um, the instructors left, moved, actually. So what we have now are different instructors doing different classes. Um, they absolutely would love to hear from you or anyone else who wants a different type of class. Um, so I will say that you'll see it's a little bit different, there's now water aerobics, uh, water exercise, and water walking. We recently partnered with Sash, um, to bring that in. And then I just wanted to mention that the classes at Ben High right now are utilizing both the group fitness room and the auditorium for an indoor walking. It's been a great indoor space that they really enjoy. And almost all of the participants are in that senior center age bracket. Um, if there's something else that any other senior, not just in the audience, but anyone watching wants to see, we've got great instructors and they would love to talk about it.
Thank you.
I thought my concern was that I find it different, you know, something that, where you just advertise all your water.
Yes.
But, yeah, maybe I have to, you have to get this, and I would go on.
I have real concerns about the parking up there. Every time I've gone up by the Ben High for the past couple of weeks, early afternoon, the front parking lot is full. And there's very little in the building, that's why I've been asking since January, what are the plans? How many apartments, how many offices? That is not the place where you want seniors or anybody to have to park behind, um, the town parking lot on Pleasant Street and go up Pleasant Street. And a lot of times, it can be hardly afternoon or evening to find a space out even on Main Street. So I think parking is going to be a real issue, not just for seniors, but for people, local people, people from other towns coming with families. So until we know what the plans are for the building, I think park, well, I think regardless, parking's going to be a major issue up there. And we don't even know if there's going to come a time where there's going to be a place where a bus will fall in and fall off, like you've done at the rec center. So if you aren't going to tell us the total plans for the Ben High, it, we're all left in the dark at this point.
Thank you, Lucy.
I need one more question.
Yes. And Shannon, introduce yourself to us.
Sure, so I'm Shannon, I study with the Community Development Director for the town. Um, just in thinking about the Ben High, I mean, part of exploring the different options and uses, um, you know, include outreach to a number of other groups, so that's something that I've been doing, and Kayla's been doing as well. So some of the people who look at the space are the Vermont Arts Exchange, you know, the Berkshire Dance Theater, the farmers who aren't going to use the space for their indoor market in the winter time. And I think that what, I don't want to get lost in the discussion, is that we're really trying to bring a space on Main Street back to life that's been vacant, and sitting there, when I started this job a couple of years ago, there was a discussion about actually, you know, tearing it down. So I think we want to think about, what are all the possible uses? And that could include senior programming, but, you know, it really could be a variety of things. And not only is there opportunity inside of the building, but we're at a moment right now of so much opportunity in funding. So for example, one of the grants that helped support the after-school programming and the summer programming that's been in Ben High was through, um, the Community Development Program, the Vermont Community Development has grants that started at fifty thousand for COVID-related projects. In this case, it was, there's an increased need for childcare and programming during COVID. Um, and now those grants have gone up to five hundred thousand dollars. So we really are in a moment when we could do something transformative, and I just wanted to share that.
Thank you, Shannon. Yeah, I think we do need to keep the big picture in mind, that we are so fortunate for this opportunity to even be in front of us to consider. And how we'll use it, we'll, we'll find out, but it's a great opportunity. All right, does that conclude our YMCAs Senior Center conversation? I believe so. All right, thank you all. It was, it's a, it's a good conversation, even though it's somewhat hard to have. All right, so let's move on to Morgan Springs Agreement, Water Agreement.
Yes. Um, I'm presenting to you this evening, uh, an agreement that has been negotiated for the company by the name of Primo Waters. As you know, and we've been discussing probably for the last two years, uh, we do want to get our facility off of Bradford Street. Uh, it creates problems with backing trucks, uh, traffic issues, uh, conflicts between cars and pedestrians, a whole host of problems that have been well documented by neighbors in the area and by board members. So the board, uh, some time ago, uh, decided to terminate the current agreement, uh, at Bradford Street with two, uh, vendors in January third of twenty twenty-three. That tells me that we needed to move on the, uh, facility on Main Street, which will, uh, when constructed, uh, allow for ingress and egress without backing movements, uh, reduce the amount of time that it takes to fill. And, uh, it actually offers, through the permit process, additional hours, uh, of operation on Saturday mornings. In order to build this, when the bids came in at, uh, six hundred and some odd thousand, six hundred and eight thousand, I believe, with additional engineering costs estimated approximately at seventy thousand, um, we obviously did not have the funds to do that. And I've been very clear with the board that the only way we can do this project would be to have vendor support. Primo Waters has stepped up. Uh, they have offered, uh, through this agreement, to make two payments of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars each, one in January of twenty twenty-two, one in February of twenty twenty-two, which will basically be pre-bought purchases, where they will buy water at the current price, pre-buy it at the current price, and then, uh, essentially, uh, collect their investment by a reduced rate, because when we open the facility, we will be charging a penny and a half per gallon, fifty percent higher than what we're charging now. And so they will recover their funds by having a rate lock for five years. At the end of that five-year period, rates will increase by three percent annually. So every year thereafter, the rates will increase by three percent. There's a second part of this, uh, contract that is not included here, because it involves the contractor who did on the project. And that is Goodsell construction. And Goodsell has indicated to us that they, because they are in town now and working on the VFOA projects, and working on the lead line renewal projects, they would just as soon keep their men and equipment in this community and keep them working. And so they are willing to start the project, um, understanding that they won't receive full payments for their efforts in the first three months, October, November, and December. And, and so you have now two contractors that have come together to make this a real possibility. And I, I, I can't tell you how essentially surprised and pleased I am that this has come together this well. Uh, it is a five-year agreement with three five-year renewable, renewable opportunities. Right now, this is the only firm with whom we have an agreement. We may be approached by others in the future, but that has not been decided at this time. This agreement, uh, sets the hours of operation based on permit conditions. It sets the access room, so they will only enter and leave the community through Route two seventy-nine. So they won't be coming through the downtown, as some have in the past. It will restrict parking on Main Street and other areas of streets within the community, so there'll be no tankers parked waiting to access the site. But the site will be large enough to allow two tankers to be on-site at one time, but only one can fill at a time. Uh, and, uh, it provides for a minimum annual draw of five million gallons, a maximum annual draw of fifteen million gallons. If they were to, in fact, take the full amount provided by the agreement, given the number of days of operation, they would average about fifty-two thousand, fifty-six thousand gallons a day, which is less than what they're currently allowed to take at a hundred thousand gallons a day. So this, this agreement, uh, is a good agreement for the community. Uh, I, I think it's, uh, amazing that, that these two vendors, these two contractors have stepped forward to help us do this. And, uh, we will be able to construct the facility over the next six months if we agree. And we will continue to make the same amount of money, so there'll be no loss and revenue for the town throughout the life of this contract. Because right now, we're getting a penny a gallon, point nine five cents a gallon. That will continue, and that will be paid to us, uh, throughout the life of this contract agreement.
Thank you. Uh, more questions, please?
Yep, uh, I want to, I do want us to clarify this price as much as possible, anyway. Um, the point zero one five, uh, proposed rate is what Primo would pay five years from now. But it, it is also the rate that any other buyer who may come in would be paying as soon, I mean, we've set, we're setting this rate essentially at the beginning of this contract. Is that correct?
That's correct, as soon as the facility opens.
Right. So, uh, there has been some discussion, I know, in the community about, uh, and I've heard it before, and, uh, about whether we're getting the best price we can for the water that we're getting. Um, and I will admit that, um, in trying to do my due diligence on this, finding out what people are paying for water and bulk delivery is not the easiest thing in the world to do. However, I was able to find, through the, um, wholesalers association, a range of, and this range really is part of the problem, trying to find out whether we're getting a good deal. Because the price depends on the volume, proximity, supply and demand, and really, uh, who installs and maintains the equipment. And so those are all variables I want folks to know. Uh, and I have seen, within that website, a range of point zero one two five, which is less than what we would be proposing, up to six cents a gallon, which we will never get. Because six cents a gallon comes if you're in Texas, or Arizona, or Utah, or probably California very soon. So, um.
Places that don't have access.
Places that, yes, places unlike New England, which do not have access, uh, ready access to this much water, spring water. So, um, I think it's incumbent on anybody who thinks that we're not doing due diligence to come forward with a contract in a region, um, uh, like New England that is, that has all the same comparables, because I could not find one. Uh, and so I'm doing my due diligence, that's, that's what I have found. And I think the price that we have set, both for the Prima, Primo Waters, who is doing us, I think, uh, in the town, uh, creating a benefit, they're actually going to be out the money, uh, half a million dollars essentially, uh, for longer. And so they will not gain the benefit of that money, that's the thing. They, they will be gaining the benefit of the water over time, but over those five years. So in essence, we're getting the benefit of, of that cash. That's another part of the price, which is, for me, who is mathematically challenged at times, difficult for me to calculate exactly, but I understand that that is a real financial benefit for the town. Okay, that's all I wanted to say.
Um, thanks for all that information, Stu. Can we just highlight for mostly the public, the differences between the contract in the middle of now and the new contract, and what makes the new one so much more, so much better?
Well, the, the old contract, we are at the top of the old contract. Uh, that was a twenty-year agreement. Uh, there were escalators built into that agreement on a five-year basis, which got us to the point nine five. So we have, we're essentially at the top, uh, of that, um, twenty-year agreement. And we're starting here at that level. That's the first benefit. Secondly, the, the first contract did not provide a restriction on access to the site. So over the years, we've had discussions with the vendors and their trucking companies about the use of the downtown as an access for the spring. It took us quite a while to get them to use two seventy-nine, of course, you had to build before you had to use it, but nonetheless, uh, we now have them with that type of access. The other problem we've had is that when trucks were arriving, they were parking on Bradford Street, awaiting space at the facility. This permit restricts that, there will be no parking on any of the streets in the community. This facility will actually pump water, will fill a seven thousand gallon truck faster. Uh, so that's a benefit, uh, to, to them as well as to us, because the trucks will use the site with it. Uh, and, and, uh, I think, from my perspective, those are the benefits of this agreement. We had to work hard with our vendors to get them to comply with the changes we asked for, because the contract did not have that language in it. So it was a constant negotiation, uh, a constant give and take. Um, and, uh, this agreement, I think, takes into account all of those issues that we had in the years and deals with it upfront in the agreement.
And the, the initial contract is not twenty years?
No, it's five years.
It's five years. And I didn't know this, but I was thinking, how are truckers going to know that they can't get down there yet? And then apparently, they talk to each other, so they'll know that I shouldn't go down there yet, because there's not going to be any place for me to park.
Well, if you, if you, if you've ever been up on two seventy-nine early in the morning, you'll see the tanker truck parked in the pull-off, waiting for the other truck to clear. So they work it out.
Yep, yep, yes, thank you.
Other questions?
Um, I did similar Googling to what Bruce did, uh, expressed earlier, and I, I thought the exact same thing that he expressed. I did come away with a, with the kind of the gist of, yeah, this is what people pay for water around here on a wholesale basis. Um, one question I did get from some folks, there is, there has been questions about community access to the, to the, the site.
One question I did get from some folks, there is, there has been questions about community access to the site. Is there anything in this contract that would prohibit us from installing our community's figure, or anything like that?
No.
And would we have to decide on that? When would we have to decide if we wanted to do that or not?
We would be able to decide on that anytime.
Okay.
I got a question.
Yes?
Just a, the question, Stu, for the new pump house is going to be how much? Pardon me, for the installation of the new pump?
The total contract price, construction price, not engineering fees, is $608,000. Now, that is, that is, we're laying pipe from the current Morgan Spring Pump House down Bradford Street to the new site. We're installing a new structured pump house with a new pump system, an infrared system, all of the things that are necessary in order to make sure that water has no organic matter in it. Morgan Spring does not, we do not chlorinate the water in the Morgan Spring Pump House. We run it through an infrared system, ultraviolet. I get those questions. Nonetheless, it's, it's a different system. Morgan Spring gets chlorinated when it enters our system. And of course, people who are buying spring water don't want to buy chlorinated water. You can go buy that anywhere. So this system will, once again, take Morgan Spring, pump it to the new facility. It will be treated there through ultraviolet, and then pumped out at that site.
Okay, and the current pump house, how old was that?
That was built when we tapped Morgan Spring. I couldn't tell you the exact date, but it goes back into the 80s, probably.
So we're talking, of course, to at least thirty years?
It's been a long time. When we constructed the 3 million gallon tank up on Chapel Road, that is, it provides us a one-day supply. It's supposed to be an emergency backup factor of safety. In order to get the water up there, we needed to pump it from Morgan Spring. So at night, pumps come on in Morgan Spring. We fill the 3 million gallon tank every time it has any use. And it's all obviously through pressure sensing and technical things that we don't need to talk about here. So that has been in place for a long, long time. And if you recall, when Truckers from Irene cut off our main supply, Morgan Spring supplied water via its pumps in that facility to probably 98% of the properties in benefit. There were some at the very high elevations that simply couldn't get the pressure to, without blowing the system apart. And we didn't do that. We blew a number of pipes trying to get the water up to Morgan Spring.
Last question. Do you have a ballpark figure of what the cost of the installation of the current pump house was?
I really don't. I suspect that the, that the pump house itself, which was really built to serve as the Chapel Road tank, is several hundred thousand dollars. There are two massive pumps in there that run periodically. When we decided to sell our water, the vendor at the time, which was Vermont Pure or Crystal Waters, they've changed names periodically, offered to build the infrared or ultraviolet system, because you have to treat that water before it can come out, and you can't treat it with water. That system was originally estimated to cost $17,000. The vendor was going to put the system in, and anyone who came in in the first five years would have to pay a portion of that investment in order to buy from us. It ended up costing $27,000 to install that system once we got to that point. And we had no other vendors that came in, so after those first five years, that they recovered their investment, so to speak. And so that little part of the system is $27,000.
So the claim that has been made is that the entire construction of the pump house was $27,000?
That's not true.
Yeah, just wanted to clarify that in the public. Stu has made a ballpark estimate of several hundred thousand dollars for the original construction, with an additional $27,000 for ultraviolet treatment. So that's what I just wanted to clarify about that.
That's correct.
And I just wanted to say, I think Casella Construction's offer to come in and do the work and be paid later is incredibly generous, and it speaks to the relationship the town has with Casella. You know, and very positive relationship, so that's great.
And Gene, you have another question?
Yeah, no, it wasn't really a question. I just, you know, we keep talking about, we don't actually talk about where the location is very often. We all know where it is, and I think we sometimes forget that a lot of people might not know where it is. So it is on Main Street. It's kind of right across the street from where Domino's is and the laundry mat.
Yes.
Right? Yeah, so that's where it is, down on Main Street, toward, toward Chapel Road.
And not only, but we'll install the system and a drive-through opportunity. But as part of our purchase of that property, which came from the same folks who at one time owned the laundry mat and that whole property, we will provide a ten public parking spaces at the front of that facility. You can see now when you go by there, there are cars down there that park there. There are more employees of the facility across the street. And so we agreed to provide public parking there as well.
Other questions? Yes?
Yeah, just a comment. I just think that Casella, by agreeing to do this, I presume they're still going to pay their people. So, I mean, this, this really looks like, it really is a generous offer of theirs to eat that expense.
I mean, they ultimately will be compensated, but they're going to carry that debt.
Yeah, that's, that's a heavy load, so I think it's worth noting.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the audience? Please.
Have you all seen the plans for the proposed site?
Yeah.
Were they shown here at a meeting?
Yes, yes, they were.
Yes. Recently then?
At the time, we approved them.
I know I called early this year, but when they were getting ready to go out to bid on it.
And they've been to the planning board as well?
Yeah, they had to go through the DRB to get a plan in the first place. So that was their first opportunity. The board has seen them when we talked about moving to another facility. At that time, we had not found a property to move to. So once we did, we had a facility designed to sit on that site, and the board did review those.
I thought when the town bought the property a couple of years ago, we were going to have a discussion and see what the site was going to look like. I think it's an accident waiting to happen. I think it's going to be a safety issue with the cars in and out of Domino's and the laundry mat. Who wouldn't want to live in the house next door? I can envision in five years when the people of all those houses are going to come to the town and want you to buy the houses, who wouldn't want to live there and have their house shaved for six days a week? And where on the property, where on the site are people going to go in and fill up their water jobs? Is it someplace safe, or are there going to be dodging these trucks?
We haven't even decided that, Nancy. We haven't decided whether or not people will be able to land and fill water jobs. That's a question that Tom asked about. We talked about having to make that decision at some point in the future.
Well, Jim asked a couple of meetings ago if there was going to be two spigots on the site, and you said yes.
No, he was asking about truck spigots.
Well, I go back to when I called in in the spring. And I said, why don't you run two pipes at the rec center to the parking lot and put spigots there? And Don said, well, we're paying $6,000. Last summer, the rec center parking lot was ripped up. You put around those pipes and spigots for next to nothing. I think for the little bit of money, this $600,000 project that's going to save on my water bill, I don't think it's worth it.
The revenue is something, it's over $100,000, so it does reduce our tax.
It accounts for about three, little bit, two percent of the recognition of water cost.
Yeah. Do you know roughly what it saves me on the bill?
Pardon me?
What does it save me roughly on my water bill?
I can't remember what it costs. The flat rate fee is currently, Nancy, I'm sorry, I don't remember my net, but...
I think the safety of the people. I just think accidents are going to be an issue with all those trucks. And I wish we'd discussed it as the public, as we were pounced we were going to.
We did discuss, we did discuss with the public. Thank you.
So I'm looking for a motion authorized by the citizens.
Yes, someone make a motion. Second?
Second. Can you second?
Yeah, second.
Here, second.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. Any abstentions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very, very much.
All right, so next up is a quick community police update. Let's see, so on procedures, we are hopeful that the police department will be able to post the policies and procedures from the fall set of procedures by the end of this week. I think that's the hope. The latest begin the next week. They had a few very, very minor edits to do, and then they were going to be ready to post. So those will be out, and they will be, because they will be completed, they will be on the Bennington Police Department website. So that is a very big thank you to everyone that commented on the procedures, everyone that served on the policy for the advisory boards, for the policies, and to, you know, for their patience and their interest in us. And then we are in the process, the working group is in the process of looking at the draft procedures for the spring policies. So we are hoping that we can wrap that up this week and then move on in the next couple of weeks to have the police department, to have the town put the draft procedures up for the community to comment on. And that will be iterated, and will probably be three weeks again, as the last one was. And then Gene, I think you were going to update on the task force.
Yeah, just a quick update on where we are with the task force appointment. So the task force has been appointed, and their training is going to start tomorrow night. They'll have two nights of training, Tuesday and Wednesday night. And Chloe Vinear Collins is doing that. She's the executive director of the Bennington County Homeless Coalition, and she's also an attorney. And then the third night, which will be Thursday night, the Bennington Police Department will be doing that night of training. The public probably should just be aware that these three nights are not open meeting laws, are not open meetings for the public to attend. The other task force meetings, once they get organized and are meeting as a group, those will be open to the public. But again, it will be like the policy committee meetings where the public is welcome to come, but you're not as a participant, just as an observer. That's kind of what I'm saying.
Is the meeting on September 7th?
Uh...
It's the 4th. 7th.
7th. October 7th is their first meeting, yes.
Yes.
And that's going to be on Zoom, so, yeah.
And so there will be a link for people to watch that meeting, but again, there will not be, there will not be public. Okay. Great. Anything else? All right, wonderful. All right, on to managers' report. You're up a lot tonight, Stu.
Well, it's not that much, really. It just takes up a lot of space. As you know, we've had a very successful tax sale recently. Out of the six properties that were up for sale, five were purchased. And most of them were purchased for greater than the amount of taxes that were owed. In a case like that, we are required to set those monies aside in a separate account for the year, which is the redemption period. So if the owner of the property seeks to redeem, they have to pay the amount bid plus 1% per month interest. So what I'm here with tonight is, thanks to People Bank, I have a resolution passed which allows us to open up those, actually, I think it's six of those. Yeah, so it's six out of seven, I'm sorry. Seven sales, six out of seven. My bad, average is just a little, just a little bit. So I will need a motion from you folks to waive the reading of the resolution, which is lengthy, and authorize the chair to sign. And that authorization then provides for the manager and the treasurer to open up these accounts and place the monies that we have received, and we have received, in fact, all of the funds. When we do a tax sale, you're, you're, it's 20% down, the remainder within five days. And everyone has, has come up with all of the funds necessary. So we are holding those funds in hopes to put them into these accounts for the period necessary under it.
So I would move to waive the reading of the resolution and authorize the chair to sign on behalf of people.
All right, second.
Great. Any suggestions? No? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, please say no. Any abstentions? All right, there you go.
Thank you. Just a little bit, a little, little discussion of the ARPA funding, which is the American Recovery and Act funding. The town will ultimately receive just under $4 million, 3.9 something million dollars from the federal and state government. We have received 50% of those funds, and they are in a bank account, our current bank account. We expect to receive the second half around this time next year, right at the end of the federal fiscal year, which ends in September. We have, and Dan may have to correct me on this stuff, I think we have up to five years to commit it. So we are developing a list of projects. We've taken input from all departments, from the BCRC, from the BBC, other organizations, and from the Select Board, a subcommittee thereof. And those have all been placed into a document that will then be prioritized. And we are contracting help from Wyten Burke, who worked with us on the Tiff district. And Dominic Cloud, who is the current manager in St. Albans, has also agreed to work with us to help us, especially with an understanding of how Tiff funds might be used to supplement the monies that we have received. The eligibility requirements are still being developed. The principle, what we know is that water and sewer infrastructure are going to be part of it. But there are other, other things that you can do with it. We just don't know all of the details. So as we cull this list and come up with a priority list that we will then present to the public for their input, we also hope to have at that time an understanding of what the eligibility requirements are, so that we're not just saying, oh, we hope we can do this. We'll know what we'll be able to do with those monies. So that's coming to a theater near you. The EPA-led cleanup of the Furnace Brook site has been completed successfully. This was an old landfill that existed prior to 1969 that people in the community apparently used. It was now owned by a private, by a private person, and had been used for construction, demolition, dump, a number of other things. When EPA identifies sites like this, they go out and they look for potentially responsible parties, PRPs. And Furnace Brook Road had a right-of-way that continued up through this property up to Chapel Road. That remained a trail and had been discontinued. So the town was pulled in as a potential responsible party. The state of Vermont purchased some of this land when they built the bridge that is 279. And so D-Trans was pulled in as a PRP. And we collectively designed a cleanup. The D-Trans did most of the design work and paid most of the monies. We provided equipment, men, labor. We provided equipment, men, labor, and did the job. And I must say that I congratulate the folks who worked on it. We had to have a number of our employees go through the 40-hour hazmat certification process, because EPA requires that you have that certification grade one. Went through the 40-hour work process, and EPA thinks we did a good job. Now, we still have a formal process to go through. MSK, who is acting on behalf of both parties to certify, the cleanup must do a formal certification, where they put their stamp of approval that we followed the plans, and it's built as it was supposed to be. And then EPA will go through a formal approval process where they accept that certification. And then we're done. Fingers crossed. As many of you know, we've been working incredibly hard to try to button up all the projects. We've got going in town. Washington Avenue continues to be torn up pretty good as we try to complete drainage. We are doing some curb work. And unfortunately, we will not be able to finish the sidewalk work that we hope to finish this year. We'll probably do that work in the spring. But that should be the last of our projects to be buttoned up for this coming year. So not only did we do the EPA-led project, we also did a whole host of other roads sidewalk work. And so hats off to our public works for the work they did. And that's all I have.
Excellent. I hate to boast, but the Imperial Avenue sidewalk work is beautiful, is beautiful, and...
I'll be happy to walk over there.
Any questions?
I just want to talk about School Street, my back of the woods, and the incredible work that our Town Highway crew did. It is beautiful. Really is. And absolutely beautifully done. You really can't see a flaw in it. So kudos to RJ and all of them.
Thank you.
Great. Oh, go ahead.
And I just want to congratulate, I don't know who, I guess I'm going to say Dan. Where's Dan, is he still here? Yeah, there he is. For the Orchard Village path, I've been dogging you, I want to go see it, so can I just go? Is it open?
It's open, it's open. We have a few bunches of items. We contacted the school in Shire today about trying to do possibly a brick cutting type of end.
Awesome.
You can go there any time, day or night, it's a schoolhouse at night. I haven't been there in a while yet, but it's very impressive and really all credit goes to Mark Hinkers at BCRC, that was his baby, and he would let it go, and he pushed, pushed, pushed. It's finally been built, and it's really nice, safe, and great for folks to get from Orchard Village to school, now those things, after the line, really has a lot to say to walk along, start school.
All right, okay, so the easiest way to access it is from Orchard Village?
Either way, you can go to the end, you can go over, and you can sort of go to Orchard Village.
Okay.
As soon as you go into Orchard Village, you can, your first stop, and just continue, you'll see it.
You'll see it, okay.
Yeah, it's, they did a great job.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Thank you, Mark. Thanks. Excellent, excellent.
All right, upcoming agendas. Oh, do you have a question?
No, I had something for an upcoming agenda.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Just thought that's where we were.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. I know that we managed the fields, the athletic fields up at SBC, and would love, we did that, and they could see just what kind of use we would get out of that, et cetera. So would like to see a report on that sometime in the near future.
That's great, okay.
You can do that.
Good.
All right.
I think I saw an email that Trey is coming to...
Yes, so Trey will be, yes, so Trey is going to give us an update, because there's particularly, because there's some changes.
Is that, is that October 11th?
So that's Trey Dossel.
That's October 11th, yes, which is our, is our next meeting.
So that's a COVID update from our CMO.
Yes. And let's see, and we're going to have a discussion with BBC.
Uh, yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes, October 11th.
Yes, okay. All right, all right. Anything else? All right, so that's good. I'm sure I'll have to talk about... All right, so other business.
I'm sorry, you have a question?
We're going to go?
Okay. I had the pleasure of attending the open house at Sunrise Family Resource Center, the open house at 226 Union Street, but also a tour of the rest of the buildings. I'm not sure I've been in all of the other buildings until now. And the work at 226 is just spectacular, and just really beautifully done. Kudos to the carpenters who put that all together, and to the staff who kept asking them to do a little bit more. That's always a good thing. So carpenters, you know who you are, I know who you are. Also, just couldn't help but note the use of heat pumps throughout those buildings. And those were purchased, I was reminded, at least in part, for money from our community block grant with the assistance of Shannon Barsati. And as a member of the energy committee, can I just say, that's a real plus. I'd love to see them coming back to us and just reporting to the community the kind of money that they're saving, and the comfort level of those buildings based on the heat pumps that they have put in. And for those of you who don't know about heat pumps, this would be a good opportunity to learn. Thanks.
Yeah, I just want to note, Jonah split out here tonight, I have a new communications director. Jonah, would you pop the microphone for a second? I'm putting you on the spot. But you recently...
Thanks? Yes, you put on the spot?
You recently posted something out on the town's website, webpage, about the rail trail clearing vegetation. And you said, how many hits were made on the notification of that?
Yeah, let me start by saying, I can't tell you how honored and proud I am to have this new role for the town of Bennington. And as someone coming from the private sector, a local businessperson for 30-plus years, I am absolutely committed to making every tax dollar and every tax cent spent on my position be worthwhile for the town and for the citizens of Bennington. So one of the things we're doing, and by the way, this is only my first week on the job, last week was my first week. One of the things we're doing is we're concerned with engagement on social media platforms. And most of the types of posts the town does are typically things like schedules, agendas, minutes. They don't typically garner very much engagement from the citizens. So we're also mixing in other stories about the town of Bennington. And I should rephrase that, not stories, but information of value to the citizens of the town. And one of that that you mentioned was a post regarding the rail trail from Bennington Station that's going to eventually go connect the downtown area with the north side area. That red post generated about 10,000 people looking at that post. For the town of Bennington and our typical social media engagement, that's huge. So again, it's important for two reasons. One, it's informational for the citizens, so they know what's going on. And two, it's also building up that engagement, so when we do have something important to say, they will see and hear us.
Well, Jonah, I want to say that, not only, you know, very good record, but in that particular post, you pointed out something that is really important for our taxpayers to know, and that is 90% of the cost of the rail trail is covered by federal and state grants. So the cost of taxpayers is 10% that all people of Bennington will be able to enjoy. And that's really important in getting that information out to people. I think people want to generally, you know, what the cost of what we do is or are.
Absolutely. And we're fortunate that we have a lot of people in town government who are very adept at taking advantage of these opportunities as they arise. And I would comment that, having just read the employee manual for the town of Bennington, it asks for town employees to be vigilant and doing their best for the safety and betterment of this community. And that is fully what I integrate to this role we're being brought.
So far, so good, a total delightful lecture.
Thank you, it's my pleasure.
You're in a position.
Any other questions while I'm here? Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have anything? Nope.
I'll just add, yeah, I think several of us were able to go to the Sunrise Open House, and I'm thinking that the pantry in the back...
Oh, absolutely.
Was, yeah, the pantry, I guess probably in the middle, maybe that's in the...
It's in 226, yes, it's in the back of it. Funded at least in part by the folks at CAPA. Their grant for folks who are food, what's the term?
Insecure.
Food insecure, thank you.
Yeah, so, yeah, that was, it was a great tour.
Yeah.
And it looked like they got quite a bit of traffic, which I'm asking that someone's got a lot of traffic. Also, I had to say, I had the pleasure of going to the dedication of the last house on Corcoran Way for Habitat for Humanity, and they have created a really lovely neighborhood. The town graciously agreed to take over plowing and road services, make it a town street. They did last year, year before. And it's really nice to see all the Habitat houses, and that they've really created a very lively, wonderful neighborhood.
Yes. That's...
And it's so good to name it after the morning.
Yes, it is.
Jimmy was always pretty open, and...
Yes, it's great.
The street is after me.
All right, so if no more of a business, then we have a need to enter into executive session on personnel matter, and we will not be taking any action when we come out of executive session? And Adam, what?
Do you have a presentation on Energizer and the ECO report, do you so close? Does it leave the building? Or will it be canceled?
Oh, you know, that's a, that's a great point. I, the Energizer report has come out in a draft form, and I'm looking at here on this. I think when that's ready, you know, there will be more information coming out. Right now, the information isn't out, but I, yeah, I think we all expected the Energizer report to be out now. So it looks like it's taking a couple of weeks longer, but absolutely, we will bring it up here, and it will also, my understanding is that it will be a public...
It's a public...
Presentation.
A public document, it's supposed to align and be reviewed.
Yeah, but there'll be a public presentation too, right? Or no?
I don't know if the consultant will be involved in the presentation, but it will be available for anybody who wants to read it.
Okay, so if it, if it doesn't come up in its own, we'll definitely, we'll definitely have individuals come and talk to us. Okay, so very good for me.
Jean, I have many members, probably seniors, who have been in the home space for years. They're now online. I've accessed this town for 30 years, they're all on my screen. I can scan my front yard with the infrared. We have the right to help and the right to say, and if anyone is physical and dead out by the way to know what's in the line in that building.
Nancy, no one disagrees, all right? So we will put it on an agenda when there's information to share, okay?
Of course, you're not using our neighborhood.
Right, right.
Oh, so I, so we have a motion on the floor to go into executive session, yes?
Yes.
Oh, in favor, yeah, no, but we already have a motion on the floor, so it's really too late. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? All right, so thank you all for, okay, thank you all for coming this evening. We'll see you on October 11th.